Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, September 10th, 2015, first meeting of the 2015-2016 school year of the school committee. At this time, we'd ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have a seat. This time, we'd ask that we observe a moment of silence for our troops serving overseas. Thank you and good evening. We'd like to begin today with a recognition of Jimmy Vittorioso, who is a longtime school committee member. Jimmy V., as we all know him, was a lifelong resident of the city. He loved and served proudly for many years. He taught in the Lawrence schools for over 37 years and taught at most of the schools throughout the city, but spent most of his career at Lawrence High School, where he's lovingly known as Mr. V. He also served the city as a member of the school committee here, as you know, for many years to make the schools a better place for all the children of Lawrence. He will be missed. We've asked Mr. McLaughlin today to come speak briefly and to present the flag, Mr. Mayor, to you, which will be flown at the Gilmet School in Jimmy's honor.
Good evening, and I have chosen to speak here from the public participation podium, as Jimmy has spoken at this podium so many times. And so I want to say good evening. The Vittorioso family, a couple of days after Jim's funeral, came to the union office and presented to the union the flag, the burial flag that was on his casket, as well as a fistful of checks and a significant number, all of them addressed to the Lawrence High School Alumni Association. And I said to the family that I would bring this flag to this committee that Jimmy loved. And I want to say that word "love" because that's what Jimmy really did. He loved this school committee. And he loved you. He loved this city. He loved Lawrence. He loved the Lawrence Public Schools. He loved the Gilmet School. And most poor los niños. He loved the children of Lawrence. And so with that, I would like to respectfully present this flag to our superintendent Jeff Riley and also ask the public and even you to consider to make a donation to the Lawrence High School Alumni Association in Jimmy's name. I'm going to make a motion at the next meeting of the Lawrence Teachers Union for the union to take the lead in that regard. You know, we're here for one thing, and that's the right thing. And I'm looking at this committee and speaking for Jimmy, I am proud to stand in front of you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, would you come up? Would you move? We have several updates for you this evening. We do recognize that the Patriots are opening tonight, so we will try not to belabor the updates. I will try to be faster than I usually am, also allowing time for you guys to ask questions and any other business that you may have. First, I want to tell you about some of the things that happened over the summer. The first was our summer meals program. As many of you know, the schools actually are responsible for serving meals to thousands of kids over the summer. We have a short video to show you the presentation. So just to thank you to our food service department. They serve these meals at schools, at parks, pools, the Boys and Girls Club, youth programs, a homeless shelter, and hotels throughout the city. So over 100,000 meals were served, a lot of work, but an important thing to do. So just thanks to our school, to our food service committee. The second item on our agenda tonight is the newcomers conference. I believe the mayor had a chance to attend this for new families coming to Lawrence and joining the Lawrence Public Schools. We have a short video about that, where they were able to go to the Partham Educational Complex on Tuesday, August 11th, and not just hear about the schools, but hear about all the services that Lawrence has to offer.
Hi, my name is Nelson Buteng, and I'm the Director of Community, Family, and Student Engagement for the Lawrence Public Schools. And we are here at the Partham School. This is one of our Level 1 schools, and we are hosting our annual newcomers orientation. One of the great and interesting features this year is that we are having actually two series of workshops for families who are new to the district or new to the country.
Hi, my name is Aletha, and I'm one of the parent ambassadors for the Lawrence Public Schools. And we're here at the Partham School for the newcomers conference that is taking place today. We're very excited for the new year, the new school year, and for new parents that are coming to the Lawrence Public Schools.
Here at newcomer day at one of our Level 1 schools, at the Partham, welcoming people and giving them all the information they need to have a successful school year. We're thrilled about it. It's always a pleasure to be here with all the great staff and parents looking to make Lawrence a better place.
Next video I want to show you is actually the opening day video. I want to thank the school committee members. Many of you were able to attend. You saw we welcomed over 2,500 staff, and we saw some great presentations by our kids, which I think we have some short clips of. Thrilled this summer to graduate 66 students. They joined the 745 students that graduated this past June. These are students that maybe had some courses to make up over the summer. They did so and got across the stage, which is quite an accomplishment. I think the headmaster said it best when he said, "It's not how you got there, but you did get there." And so a very exciting time in August for this graduation, which I think we have a brief slide here.
I just want to say one thing to the graduates before we move on is a real deep congratulations for persevering in the face of adversity and meeting all of your challenges. And just remember, it's not where you start, it's where you finish. And in a few minutes, you will be high school graduates. So congratulations, and we will begin our ceremony. When I call your name, you may come to the stage to receive your diploma. Steven Collado. Joe Riz Delos Santos. Edries Felice. Narda Reyes. Jeremy Rivera. And John William Vandavere.
I want to tell you more than anything that your journey that you went to cross the stage is a lot like life. It's not always perfect, like Superintendent said. Sometimes it takes longer, sometimes it looks harder, but like you showed us here today, you can do it.
By the power invested in me, by the Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education, and by the Governor of Massachusetts, please stand. I now pronounce you graduates of Lawrence High School. You may throw your caps.
Next item I just want to address with folks is the heat. As you know, we've had some pretty severe heat recently, and I did make a decision to dismiss school early the other day after taking, going to almost every school and taking temperature readings in different schools. We felt that it was in the best interest of our students to send them home early. I would say that while there were some unhappy folks, parents who had to work, I think for the most part, people understood the decision and why it was made. We had before that, on some of the other hot days, taken a lot of measures to try to make our kids and our staff comfortable, including having extra fans, extra water. We had frozen treats or popsicles on several days. I think we were the only district in Massachusetts to do that. But on the third day of the heat wave, with the humidity being so oppressive, we just had to make that decision. So I recognize that it's not always the easiest of decisions or the most popular decisions, like snow days, but I think it was the right decision. I don't know if folks have any questions about that. Anyone? Well, so thanks. Okay. So we're going to ask now if we can go to the first day of school. There's a small slideshow about that. Well, I tell you briefly that on our first day of school, which happened several weeks ago, we welcomed over 15,000 students, which is more than we even projected. So as you recall, when I first arrived about three and a half years ago, we had 12,500, 12,600. As of the first day of school, we had 15,013 children. So the children are coming. And this is just kind of a little slideshow showing you some of the pictures of opening day. So just want to thank our staff for having everything ready for our children. We started earlier than most school districts, and we were up and running and ready to go, and it was a really strong opening. Everyone from, you know, the buses to safety, everything ran pretty smoothly. Whatever glitches we did have, we were able to sort out pretty quickly. So just a thanks to everyone, especially our teachers, for getting ready for the new year. I want to shift briefly and talk to you about the district priorities this year. We have five specific district priorities. I like to brief the school committee at the beginning of each year on what the priorities are. For this year, first and foremost, as always, the continued academic and school improvement for all of our schools, stronger teacher leadership teams, best practice sharing. One of the things I've talked a lot about with teachers is this idea of sharing their lessons and their great lessons with each other. A lot of times, teachers are kind of in their own classroom, it's their own island, and we want to start fostering that ability for teachers to share the great things that are happening. So you'll hear more about that as the year goes on. High school redesign. We were thrilled to open the 9th Grade Academy and Abbott Lawrence Academy at LHS a week early before everyone else, so our freshmen could get their feet wet. Thank you to Headmaster Fiatto, Principal Cote, and all the staff, really, and Principal Siprich for getting the high school up and running and ready to go. High school redesign, as you know, is an ongoing process. The teachers will be working with the headmaster later in the fall, probably in October, to start the planning process for what the upper academies will look like. The headmaster will be here throughout the year to update this committee on what is happening. Our third item is special education. I think we've seen some good growth in scores from our special education students. We've seen a sharp rise in graduation rate of our special education students, but it is my belief that our structure for delivering those services is antiquated and in some places, broken. So despite all the great efforts of our teachers, I feel like we really have to put together a task force to figure out how we can do a better job of delivering special education services to our kids. And you're going to see that task force be created later in the fall, where we're going to take a full year to really kind of figure this out, so that we can maximize really instruction and how we deliver services to our kids. Again, you know, I'm really pleased with our special education teachers, but the system itself for how we deliver it, some of it is antiquated, some of it is broken, and I think we can do a better job, particularly around being more inclusive and giving our kids more opportunities to be included with the regular education program for those kids that are in our sub-separate programs. And we'll talk about, more about that as the year goes on. Our fourth priority for the year is a facilities master plan. I've asked Seth Frasine to kind of lead a group to start looking at the facility's needs, given this growing enrollment, particularly in the Arlington, Back Bay, North Common neighborhoods, as well as at the LHS campus. And this work will expand to other neighborhoods in the coming years, but Mayor, we're going to be obviously working with you to kind of figure out next steps, given the enrollment trends that are before us. And then the last priority for us is kind of a data system integration process. We have different data systems in LPS that don't always talk to each other. We're trying to figure out how to kind of come up to the next generation and get these systems talking to each other. So that won't be one that's obviously particularly visible to the public, but I would argue that it's one that's really important to our educators and to folks inside the system to make things run more smoothly. With that said, I don't know if there's any questions about those priorities, Mr. Mayor? Any questions? Ms. Ortiz?
So would it be premature to ask who's going to be made up in this task force or not who's specific?
Yeah.
What is the task force going to entail?
We're going to look for a wide range of folks, from school-based folks, central office folks, parents, outside special education organizations, just maybe business in the community. We're going to try to take a real wide scope to get a committee together that can really look at the problem from many different angles. So I didn't bring kind of the preliminary list of things, but I can certainly have that for you at the next meeting, where I'll show the different kinds of things. And depending, when is the meeting in October? I'll have to check that. But, you know, we'd value your opinion. We can actually probably get that to you in the next week or so. And if you wanted to add input into who you think or what type of position you think would be beneficial to be on the committee, we'd love to hear that.
So to clarify, the list that you're going to provide, the list that you're going to provide is just those that are, that will be possibly on the task force?
Right. It'll say like, it'll, like the position, right?
Okay.
So it'll say like two co-chairs, maybe two parents, a community representative, special education, outside consulting group representatives, and things like that. We won't have specific names attached to it yet. School community member. School committee, obviously, school committee members. We'd love for you to serve, Mr. Mayor.
Like what? So with that task force, so just, because this is of interest to me, this is something that we talked about from the beginning when I jumped on. Will this task force then be given this list of things to look at, or are they going to be the determinant on what is actually addressed?
We're going to give them some broad guidance, but we're going to also ask that they kind of get together and have like community forums to hear from parents and other people in the community, I mean, to really kind of look in a deep way at every nook and cranny of the process.
With best practices being a part of that?
That's the hope. Absolutely. And not just here, we have some best practices here, but there's other school districts that I think that we'll be traveling to, to visit.
You have my attention.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Blackford.
Thank you. So what, what numbers are we talking about right now currently with staffing and student population? Do you have numbers for special education at all, or?
We're below 20%, so that's about a little less than 3,000 children. And I don't have the staffing numbers with me. We can certainly get you that data. You know, I think for us, it's less about the staffing and the people than it is about the structure. I'm not sure, we have a lot of sub-separate programs. That means substantially separate kids that are pulled out for a majority of the day. And I believe, for instance, but I want the committee to investigate, that many of these students could be reintegrated into the mainstream and be more, and put in a more inclusive environment.
One of the programs that I was lucky enough to be part of when I entered preschool was an integrated program. So it was kids who had been in the school already who had special needs, but they were, we integrated with them in the sense of we helped teachers, or we were with them and we learned at the same pace with them in the sense of we were there to help or like pick up the bag or something like that. Like, we're preschool kids, we're not doing anything extensive.
Right, right.
Are there any kinds of programs like that currently in the sense of possibly younger children with, kids with special needs?
Yeah, I'm not sure we have many of those programs here in Lawrence at the moment, but it's certainly a model that I'm interested in doing. In full disclosure, I have a child with special needs, and it was in such a program in a different district where she is one of five children with special needs, and there's another 10 or 15 typically performing students in the classroom. And I think that's a good model, and it's been successful for both kids, both kinds of kids, right? So we're looking at different models in different districts to see what can be best for our kids.
And when we do have those kids who are taken out of the classroom in the sense of their own individual learning, as it were, how much of that day is completely just them? Is it?
It really varies by kid, so everything's written into a kid's individual education plan, or IEP, which is a federal document. And so each kid has their own tailored plan. So some kids are in substantially separate, pulled out of the program completely. They're not in any mainstream kids. And then there's some kids in the middle, and some kids that are in regular ed but might go to one class where they get some special services. So there's a real range based on the individual kids' needs.
And is there a major difference in population when it comes to like high school age and elementary age?
No, I don't think so. I think it's, it's pretty standard throughout. What I would say is, and this is something that I've fought against my whole career as a start as a special educator, is that sometimes special education is seen as a place where you're in forever versus a place where you go to get service and then you go back, you get into a less restrictive environment. And we need to do a better job, I think everyone in the country needs to do a better job of not just making it a place where you go, but a place where you go to get services and then you're going to work your way back into a more typically performing environment.
Thank you.
Yep. Great question. Anyone else?
Just wanted to make a point. I know that we've talked before, but if we could find a time for the consultants for the facilities plan to speak to us probably sooner than later, so we can get, make sure we don't have any false starts and things of that nature, the sooner the better.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. Anything else? Thank you.
Okay. Let me just write it down. Apologize. The next item I just wanted to make folks aware of is Cratos de Crayons has been a great partner for us for many years. This year, they graciously donated 2,000 backpacks to the district, doubling last year's number of 1,000. This is a combination of partnership between Cratos de Crayons, the Gem Group, and New Balance. And they just really care a lot about our kids. I think the Partham Elementary School is where I was this year, and all our incoming kindergartners got their choice of backpacks with supplies. So this is just a great opportunity for our kids and just a nice gesture by, by the Gem Group, New Balance, and Cratos de Crayons has been a great partner. So I just want to recognize them. And let's see. That concludes my updates. With, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to move to other and the discussion of school meeting locations for school committee meetings. That makes. A hot topic at the end of last year. Did we move, have we not been to a place that we wanted to go? I feel like we've gone to all that we've been to, to the Gilmet.
I don't think we've done anything in District C, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think we've done anything in District C, if I'm not mistaken.
Arlington School.
Maybe we should do the Arlington School next.
Arlington School?
Arlington School.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Could I offer?
You guys want to vote on that?
A suggestion?
Yeah, we'll take a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to take a vote?
Intend a motion to have our next school committee meeting at the Arlington School.
Motion.
Motion being made by Mr. Blackford, Second, Mr. Poyano, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.
Can we set up some kind of a schedule where we maybe take the 10 meetings in the year and do five at a school, five at different schools, and maybe five at the Parent Resource Center? That center seems to be a place where parents like to go. And I think we might have more participation of parents if we, you know, offer a night there. Is that possible?
Yeah. Yeah, if a couple of us wants to get together and look at the calendar and say, you know, which nights want to go out, I think that'd be a good idea. And then maybe bring it back to the group and we can vote on it next meeting. I think that's a great idea, just so we can have it all scheduled out.
Have it all laid out for the whole year.
And by the way, the Family Resource Center is a good idea too. So unless anybody has anything to say against that, but we voted on going to the Arlington, but after that, we'll come here, have a meeting, and then discuss the rest of the balance of the meeting. Does that work?
That's fine.
Okay. I think that concludes other, and we'll move to questions, Mr. Mayor.
Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions or comments, if folks have anything they want to say about what they've been up to over the summer?
I have to tell you, I think that the way the staff handled the heat issue is important to talk about, not only were kids in hot situations, but teachers were in those situations trying to put classrooms with 30, 40 kids together and keeping them without blowing their tops. Everybody from the security guys and the lunch people, all those things, all those people that usually do their work under better circumstances had to do it in buildings that did not expect to be warm, 95 degrees in September. But like I told the parents at the leadership meeting, you know, the city has to take, has to begin to have this discussion about having more responsibility about these buildings, and that we will, you know, that I pledge to do that going forward. But more importantly, that they should have conversations with people. This is not a political statement, it's just a general statement, people running for city council, because city council, school committees don't vote on bond issues for schools. City councils will on bond issues for schools. And if we need to bond for HVAC, if we need to bond for which is air conditioning and heating, or we have to bond for new buildings, or the build out of new building space, that's all going to happen at the city council meeting. So as people go around, meeting people for voting, they should ask them about whether or not they support money for schools.
Ms. Ortiz?
So I would like to know about professional development. I know that we have professional development days and that teachers start a little bit sooner with that professional development, but I don't, it's always been a mystery to me, what is professional development? So if I can, specific to my school, you don't have to, I know that every school is possibly different, but I would like to know what those things are, like what those sessions are and what they entail.
Absolutely. And you're correct. We give broad autonomy to our schools to kind of set their own professional development.
So with the Rollins and specific to the Partham?
Yep. And so we can, we can get you that. We do sometimes offer district level PDs that people can opt into. And so we'll kind of give you both the Rollins and Partham, but also kind of an idea of some of the things that the district is offering as well. Whether it's SEI training or what have you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent.
Okay. Hearing no questions, I think with this time we'll move to public participation. And I'm told we have one speaker, Mr. Mali is here. Welcome, Mr. Mali.
Good evening, honorable members. We, the parent and citizen, are saddened by passing away of great citizen such as Mr. Vitor Yoso. Mr. Vitor Yoso dedicated his life for education of our children. We honor his memories. We, the parent and citizen, are proud of Lawrence Public School on the way to become the best public school in the nation. The best model of success that made this proud city of immigrant to rise up again. We are proud that this public school with the impeccable leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raddie has risen up to be now the more Level One school, more M-CAS improvement, more parental involvement, and more higher school graduate. We are proud to inform you that Turnaround Plan has turned our public schools around. We support our, seek our teachers and their proud union. We must remember the teachers' hard work, we appreciate them. Lawrence Public School now has a parent center that encourages the highest parental involvement. The mission of the Turnaround Plan brought the most focused budget on a student in the history of Lawrence Public School. We demand of you in this important election year to support our teachers and their union. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mali. Mr. Blackford, you have a point of personal privilege?
I just actually had one question, and I completely forgot what it was. So I apologize for that. I'll have to ask you later, I apologize.
Next. Intend a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
It may, Second, Mr. Poyano, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.